I want to call this meeting back to order. We'll now move into the committee of the whole. First item before us is Barclay Company recognition for the 2014 Corporations for Community Award. And who is handling? Mayor?
Pam.
Pam.
Oh, Pam, okay.
Does Pam handle this?
I don't know. That's what I'm asking.
It says Pam.
Okay, I just know I'm not.
It says Pam.
Okay. Okay, Pam.
I'm Pam Keisner, Library Director, and I'm going to turn the podium over to Fay Hill, the Chair of the Bellingham Public Library Board of Trustees, who's going to do the honors.
Good afternoon. It is a pleasure for me to introduce two people that you probably are already acquainted with, Stowe Talbot and Jeff Kochman. Could you come forward? Did you wear your medallion? That's great. We are proud to honor the Barclay Company for receiving the 2014 Award for Corporations for Communities, presented by the Washington Secretary of State at Kim Wyman's office. As the Councilman Borneman described, this award is intended to honor companies who have demonstrated a strong commitment to their communities in giving and whose contributions have significantly impacted the quality of life of those communities. We, the library, nominated the Barclay Corporation for their strong support of the Bellingham Public Library. The Barclay Company is owned by the Talbot family, part of the Bellingham business community since 1941, and during that time they've been involved in countless community events and philanthropic activities. Barclay Company provides rent-free space for the Barclay branch library. When this began, this partnership began in 2008, the company also provided construction and furnishings to create a very welcoming library. The company's generous, ongoing support have made it possible for this little library to serve as a popular community learning and gathering place. Today, we have nearly 4,000 visitors a month to this small library. The company's outstanding support to our library is among its many generous contributions to this community, and we in the Bellingham community are grateful for all that you have given. On November 12th, the four winners of this award each received a National Association of Secretaries of State medallion. Could you hold that up? I thought it was going to be this small little thing, but it's big. And they received this during a ceremony at the Secretary of State's office in Olympia. Please join me in thanking Stowe, Jeff, and the Barclay Company team for being selected for this honor and for all that they have done to make our community a better place.
Very, very appreciative of this award. Just want to say that it's, as glad as we are to have this, to provide, you know, the space for the library, it also provides a great service to our growing little urban village, and a library is obviously a very important component of what will become a really fantastic urban village in the future. So, happy to do this. I'm thrilled.
Thank you.
I'll say one thing. I worked for the Talbets for 24 years, very, very generous family, been around a long time, and continue to do so and are very supportive of almost anything we bring in front of them as far as community organizations that are interested in sport. So, I mean, Stowe and his sister Jane deserve all the credit. Thanks, Stowe. Good job.
Stowe and Jeff, thank you so much for your support of the library and for joining us today and sharing your award. Before we move on to the next item, I wanted to take this opportunity to celebrate someone else who has given so much to our community. Fay, if you could come back up here for a moment. As many of you know, Fay Hill is in the final weeks of her term as a library trustee. She's been a trustee since January 2005, serving two five-year terms, and that's the limit for our trustees, and she's served as president or chair of the board for the past two years. She's been a dedicated leader, and she's also very active in our Friends organization. We've been actively recruiting a new trustee to fill her large shoes. We invite anybody interested to our website for more information. Meanwhile, please join me in honoring Fay and thanking her for her 10 years of service to the library.
So, I guess our next item up is another library item. It's the Watcom Reads update.
Yes. This is Library Day at City Council. And I won't take too much of your time. This is about Watcom Reads. The book selected for 2015 is "The Boys in the Boat" by Daniel James Brown. I have copies for each one of you, as well as a hot-off-the-press baseball card. This is the beginning of the marketing materials, much more to come. "The Boys in the Boat" is about celebrating the 1936 U.S. men's Olympic rowing team. Nine working-class boys who stormed the rowing world, transformed the sport, galvanized the attention of millions of Americans, and rode for gold in front of Adolf Hitler. This takes place in Washington State from the UW, so it's particularly of interest to us. We're gearing up for various programs in January and February in Bellingham and throughout the county, following the themes in the book, including book discussion groups, presentations by Judy Rantz Williams, daughter of Joe Rantz, who was one of the nine boys in the boat; panel discussions featuring history experts who explore the relationship between politics, sports, and popular culture during that era; reflections on life and rowing by noted wilderness rower and athlete Dale McKinnon. This all culminates with "Boys in the Boat" author Daniel James Brown speaking at public events on February 24th, 25th, and 26th. We're finalizing all of these plans now, so stay tuned for details and upcoming promotions. Special thanks to the friends of the Bellingham Public Library for their generous support of Watcom Reads, and the hard work of the staff of the Bellingham Public Library, Watcom County Library System, and the many other organizations involved. I hope you will join us by reading the book and taking advantage of these events. Mark your calendars and stay tuned for details. Do you have any questions before I pass out your copies?
Right. Thank you, Pam. And I do look forward to reading it.
Will already read his, and he says it's very good.
Thank you, Pam. So, the next item up is the setting of the Bellingham City Council's 2015 city council meeting schedule. So, we have a calendar in our packet on page 54 that was submitted. I know there's been some discussion by some people that would like to have some changes to this, so that's what this time is about.
I do have a couple of proposals. Towards changing. Some of the things that came up is to give us a little bit more time between meetings in the summer. So, some suggested dates are in July, keeping the 5th, but instead of doing a meeting on the 20th to meet on the 27th. Sorry, on the 6th. I'm sorry. Thank you.
To meet when?
To move it to the 20th meeting to the 27th, which will give us three weeks in July, is a proposal. And then in August, to meet instead of the, go on to the 3rd, so giving us another break in between the 27th and the 3rd, to move to the 10th, leave the 10th, and then the next meeting be on the 31st, which would give us three weeks' time in July and three weeks in August for meetings and give us a little bit more time. Does that make sense? So, keep July 6th, move the 20th to the 27th, and then in August, move the 3rd to the 10th and the 10th to the 31st.
Okay. So, that's a motion?
That's, I move if everyone supports that.
Okay. Yes.
Did you say the 22nd or the 27th?
22.
July 27th?
27th, okay.
We could move it to the 22nd.
So, in August, we'd meet the 10th and the 31st.
The 10th and the 31st, and in July, on the 6th and the 27th.
Okay.
Second?
So, we have a motion. It's, yes, Mayor?
I didn't know if you had discussed it all on Thanksgiving week. That had come up this year, that today is, you know, potentially not the day, maybe not the day you'd like to do, in case someone wants to take a break at Thanksgiving. So, was that part of your discussion?
That was me.
Well, I don't think that was just you.
I'm glad.
I'm just going to throw that out there for the next.
Okay. So, right now, we've got a motion on this part of it, so any other comments for July and August changes? All those in favor, answer aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstention? Okay, that motion passes, 6-0. Kathy Lehman, well, she won't be here anyway, so. Yes, Jean.
Yeah, I brought this up last year, so I'm just going to make it simple. We just moved November 23rd, 23rd meeting to November 30th. I travel on that week, but that's just me, so I would move that.
The 23rd to the 30th?
30th, yes.
They put three in a row.
Jack?
That would mean three meetings in three weeks.
Oh, wait a minute.
Yeah.
Right.
What am I looking at?
We go one in advance, and we have two weeks together.
Oh, I see. Okay. We could do it, okay, let me change my motion. Withdraw that motion. Nobody seconded it anyway, so it wasn't a motion, so. Meet on the 9th and the 16th.
I'll second that.
And you could have the 23rd or the 30th for a budget session. That's fine.
The 9th and the 16th?
You have Thanksgiving.
Okay. Okay. So, that was a motion?
Yes.
To meet on the 9th and the 16th in November. There a second on that? Okay. So, we got a motion second before us. All those in favor, answer aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Motion passes, 6-0. Looks like we got a calendar. Oh, no, no. Okay, now what?
I had some thoughts around our budget meetings. I'm really good with our council meetings, but our budget meetings, I'm wondering if there's any way possible, instead of meeting every Monday in October and November, if we could have those meetings put with our council meetings? Is there any way that, is that all possible? This is very challenging for me and my employer to take every Monday off and take those as vacation days. Is there any way we can change that?
One of the problems is getting it done with just the council meetings. The other option that could be done, because we used to do it, and Jean knows, because for us, that worked.
At nighttime.
We had our budget meetings in the evenings.
In the evening.
We would do it on a Wednesday evening or something, and that's another option, you know? It makes it, you know, that's how we, we always used to do it that way.
I'd love to propose that we have meetings in the evening for our budgets. It's very challenging in October, November, as I'm planning for the next year to balance my work commitment and my council commitments.
I understand.
Terry and I have been there, but we're both retired now.
Yep. And this council, as long as the citizens want us to have a part-time council, it means for people who are working, be on the council, so we have to do council meetings based on, allow that. Yes, Mayor?
Well, first of all, it's going to be a supplemental budget next year. We don't anticipate that we'd need to have every single Monday meeting. There'll be very few changes, and I know there's been some interest in the council having the budget presentations done a different way with different kinds of material. Not everyone, jurisdictions spend the amount of time we do, meeting on the budget the way we've set it up, and we were trying not to overwhelm anyone, so I'm sure that we could look at changing the schedule. I don't know if it's necessary to do it today without a little research into how we could, how, discussion about how we could present the information in a different way so that it, because like the first meeting we had, we did four budgets and we were done, and we had time left over. So, there might be a better way to lay out the information, but we're also happy to do evening meetings if that's what the council prefers.
How would this sound, Pinky? If we hold off the question of the budget, since right now, we're just looking at our meeting schedules, and which we could approve that now, and when we have our reorg meeting, we'll put that, have Marie put that on the agenda, at least for discussion about that, because, you know, we need to try to set the meeting so that it accommodates people who work schedule, because we want people on the council that understands what it's like to be at work and doing those things and have, you know, to accommodate the schedule, and we always used to do that, and.
And Terry, I think, I'd also, at the reorg meeting, maybe before that, we could work with the finance chair or whoever, or all of you, about the presentation of the materials and what kind of information you want to make sure you have, so that we don't have to go back and re-meet about the same thing.
I know, and the budget's always that tough thing, because we've always had that, where some people want different, you know, as Bob Ryan used to always say, "I want to peel back the layer of the onions." Some people want all this detail, and it's in excruciating detail, and some of us.
Don't like onions at all.
Well, I love onions, but.
Feel that they can get by with a lot less of the detailed stuff. So, it is a conflict with seven people.
I've had, I've reviewed a couple different, both county, WTA, and some other, the state, and some other institutions and how they present their budgets. And it's different than we do it. So, it might be easier to pull the council up to the what you want us to do level, and then we can give you the financial information that gives you the assurances that we're also being financially sound, and we're considering all the things that you need us to consider when we make recommendations.
Yeah, I think that sounds really good, to be able to have that discussion, and there is ways of getting around some of it, where for some people, if we can, if you've got the majority of people, it satisfies their needs, and if other people needs more detail, individuals can get that, sometimes.
Well, I mean, I understand that the council is the one that's voting. I, you know, up until this job, I was the one that was voting on somebody else's budget, and I have to tell you that I wanted to make sure that at the right level of interest, I was being responsible for the votes I was taking, so I appreciate that about all of you, that you want to feel comfortable that you're voting for something that you can explain and show to the public, so. But I think there probably is a way to get the information in a different way that'll satisfy everybody.
Good. Roxanne?
I move that we approve the 2015 city council meeting schedule as amended to, the amendments include meeting in July on the 6th and the 27th, in August on the 10th and the 31st, and in November on the 9th and the 16th.
Second?
Okay, we got a motion and second before us. Any other comments? All those in favor, answer aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Motion passes, 6-0, with Kathy Lehman excused.
Excuse me, Terry?
Yes.
And that means that, I agree with your suggestion, we should take a sub at reorg, is that the understanding?
Yeah.
And then we'll have another council number on board as well, and they can have a seat.
Yeah. That sounds good. Okay, let me see, where are we? Okay, our next up is Access Bellingham update.
Good afternoon, Brian Henrich, Mayor's Office. I wanted to come back after we'd had a little time to implement Access Bellingham and give you a brief update on some of the activity and perhaps a couple of changes that we're making. I think first and foremost, I want to let you know that we have received seven submissions so far. There have been a couple of weeks where we didn't receive any submissions.
Could you explain for those listening what Access Bellingham is?
Sure. It's a public access component that we offer on BTB 10. We offer six hours every Sunday for content that's submitted by the public. The city doesn't have any content or editorial control, but we do make the time available for people who are interested to submit their videos.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you. So, we continue to offer that, like I said, every Sunday. We haven't received a tremendous number of videos, and when we first charted out some of the policy considerations and how we would manage those submissions, we didn't want to repeat the videos or have them submitted more than once. We're changing that because we have time that allows that. I think in addition to that, we will be offering, continue to refine the proposal for a training program, still anticipate that being implemented in first quarter of '15. Hope to have that available for distribution by next week is the goal. And then just to give you just a quick sense of the communications that we've done around it, we have ran a series of ads in the Cascade Daily Weekly for a full month. There's been a number of flyers at the library downtown and so forth. There is a promotional video that was created by staff that airs on Access Bellingham during that time as well, and we continue to stay in touch with the stakeholder groups. In addition, we offered four informational meetings at the Central Library and the Fairhaven Library. So, we don't, we don't plan on having any more of the informational meetings. We had, I want to say around 40 to 50 participants who came to those to learn a little bit about the process. So, we continue to offer it, continue to work on making sure people are aware that the service is available. Again, the training program that RFP will go out and will come back to implement, ideally first quarter of '15, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Questions? Yes. Pinky?
A quick question, Brian. We talked about getting equipment so that people could use it and make their own video. Could you tell, give me an update on where we're at with that?
Sure. That'll be part of the training program. We want to make that available as, it's a preferred part of the training program, so if someone is able to offer that without that assistance, then we'll look at if they can manage that same type of program, like a check-in, check-out type of system. So, that'll be part of the training program is what we envision.
Anything else? Yes, Roxanne.
Are we worried about the startup of this and maybe not having enough content from the get-go to fill that timeframe?
I'm a little surprised that there's not more. I wouldn't say I'm worried about it yet. I mean, it's still fairly new in terms of, you know, when we do a pilot program of something we haven't offered of this nature. I think it takes a little time to build that awareness and for people to understand how they can participate and what that looks like, so I'm hopeful that the training program will lend itself to, you know, more creation of content, people being aware of what they can do.
Jack?
Yeah, I would echo what Brian's saying, is that I think the training program plus the access to equipment will, I think, help with the number of submissions that come in.
Okay. Anything else? Well, thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is the adoption of the City Center Implementation Strategy.
Technical difficulty, but I think we're gonna, let's see. Somehow, it powered itself off at some point, so I might just go with a different approach, PowerPoint and paper version. I had to take the staple out though first. Excuse me.
See, I'm comfortable with silence. Viewers aren't.
Sorry about that. Okay. I'm glad I brought an extra printout. So, I'm here today to present the City Center Implementation Strategy to you. This is a strategy that we've pulled together for downtown, Old Town, and the waterfront district. So, all three of those districts have adopted urban village master plans, and the mayor really wanted an implementation strategy that showed what we were tackling in all three districts, and that we were taking a look at our progress for all three districts. Oops, this is going to be interesting. Yeah, it's okay. All right, so, as you know, the districts are in various stages of redevelopment. This image here on the left is an image that was taken, oh, probably 12 years ago. Does anybody wonder what monkey vomit's up to these days? Monkey vomit was a resident here at the pit. We had a little protest at the time, and this site was.
An anarchist.
This, this site was owned by the City of Bellingham. It's on the corner of Railroad and Holly. It looks familiar. We owned some other properties that look like this today in Old Town, but this is an example of an opportunity that the city took and kind of leading, in this case, the redevelopment of this intersection. So, today, we have the marketplace building, excuse me, on the top right there. The city took some steps to condemn some blighted properties, which led to the redevelopment of the flame on the left, or excuse me, on the bottom right. As well as, what was the Travel Lodge then, has been redeveloped into a vibrant, vibrant place. While we were, while the Woo's were designing. While we were, while the Woo's were designing this building, the city was looking for resources to implement yet another project identified in the last plan, which was creating a permanent home for our Bellingham Farmers Market. In fact, one of our first stops was to Kelly when she was working at the state. Thanks to individuals like Brian Griffin and John Bleffin and Mike Finger with the market, we had advocates, we had advocates that were looking after the farmers' market, but we also had advocates that were just interested and passionate about investing in our community and creating a wonderful community gathering place, which I think we all can agree that this has become. But we, what made this investment, not just for the farmers' market, we made this investment because we wanted to bring people downtown. We wanted to bring more and more people to downtown to expose them to businesses and other venues that we have in our downtown core. This is a day of, the week where it actually is difficult to find parking on Railroad Avenue and within this area. And that's a sign, and we don't, at least, we don't get too many complaints, I don't know if Ted does, but we don't get complaints from the business community because this type of activity is actually helping more than just the farmers' market, it's helping the businesses. So the other thing that's done is it's created a neighborhood amenity. And, okay, that's right. Let's show this shot here. So it's that community venue that is creating all kinds of opportunities as a gathering place, not just for the market. And it's, I wouldn't say it's created, but I think that it, with a lot of the investment around it, has created a place where people want to live. And this is a shot of one of the first buildings built right next to the Depot Market Square. It's about a two-and-a-half acre development parcel. Rick Westrup purchased that site probably about 10 or 12 years ago. He has weathered a recession. It's just been amazing. And this is what, one of the goals that we had when we adopted the last plan was more people living downtown. And the city doesn't really have always that kind of control over whether or not people are really going to choose to invest. And in this case, we had a partner in Rick Westrup who took it upon himself to redevelop this property. He has now developed 359 residential units right on that parcel, and he has 60 more that are coming into permitting here shortly that will complete this whole master plan that he envisioned years ago. So while he was busy trying to find investors and get things going, we had the public facilities, excuse me, the public facilities district working in our arts district. We took advantage of an opportunity that the State of Washington provided, which was to take a tax, basically it's a tax rebate. The sales taxes collected here, not just in Bellingham, but all of Watcomb County, go to the state, the state gives back a portion, which in our case is paying the debt on both the investments made at the historic Mount Baker Theater and the new museum. Our community chose to invest in our arts and our downtown core. A lot of other communities around the state used those funds to invest in sports venues and convention centers. We chose to invest in the arts. A couple of years ago, when we were asking the business community what they felt were some of the strengths of our community, oftentimes they would recognize the strength of our arts communities as something that's pretty powerful size for our community, our size. The city's investment in the arts district was in the streets. And so this image in the middle-left and to the right represent some capital projects that the city undertook. We decided to invest in what the community kind of identified as the gateway to the arts district, which is right there at Bay and Holly. And those investments are, I guess, what we were looking at is already a pretty healthy mix of businesses, but it wasn't anything like it is today, but chose to invest there. And look at that. I mean, by the way, every image in this PowerPoint is from our own downtown. A lot of times planners have to bring in imagery from other communities, and I didn't have to do that. This shot's also taken by Darby. I was going to give credit to a professional because it really is a good shot. This is downtown sounds. Downtown Bellingham Partnership is a true partner of the cities and the communities in providing a variety of things, but one of those is putting on events in downtown. And I was thinking about all of the, all of the things to do on this block, and I might not have captured them all, but I want to list these off because this is kind of the envy, I think, of what some communities are trying to get to and what we're going to try and get to in other places of our downtown and waterfront and Old Town. But in this block, and then I reached out across the street, we have bakery, Electrical Inventions Museum, Spark Museum, soap making, shoe repair, art classes, movies, housing, pizza, outdoor gear, coffee, live music, art studios, wine, affordable housing, jambalaya, and outdoor seating, music lessons, art galleries, donuts, software employees, and hundreds of them, and the mega zapper. This is all in one block of our downtown. It's pretty impressive. Almost all of these are one-of-a-kind, unique experiences for downtown, and almost none of them were there when we adopted the last plan. So that's pretty, pretty powerful. Just throw up this shot to recognize that there are lots of smaller initiatives, those small details that the city and others undertake to make sure that this, these neighborhoods are well-cared-for, that they're unique, that they have their own identity. So we need to keep focusing, and in what we're looking at now in some cases is replacement of some of that, those amenities. Oops, I do want to, I was flipping. This is also to recognize that we have a city center that is home to a lot of people, but it's also the place that even more people work in and visit. So we need to make sure that we are able to bring people to downtown, in the city center, and out, back home, as well as work on transportation improvements, moving people throughout downtown. So that's an ongoing process for us and one that you'll see quite a number of actions to address, you know, bicycle movement, et cetera. So we've got a pretty healthy place. I think we have a pretty healthy start. It's always blue sky in downtown Bellingham. But we know that, I highlighted some pretty positive things for you today, but we also have a lot more work to go. These really healthy places that I showed you today are things that we want to see move forward in other parts of our downtown, as well as Old Town and the waterfront district. This implementation strategy is going to help us get there. And just quickly there, that is the map showing the three districts which make up I just learned this new tool and it's not really transferring, and I was really proud of myself, but there's some imagery behind the words, and I was pretty excited about that. So, I think, I hope that you kind of gathered that we really need to have a lot of different projects going in all of these districts at the same time. While we're working, implementing one, we should be planning another, we should be working on many at the same time. And we should involve a lot of different players. Every single project that we work on involves lots of different stakeholders, and it's those strong advocates, and we have plenty of strong advocates in Bellingham. So strong advocates that kind of take us from here to the next level and push us into greatness. We need to communicate our serious commitment. We do that with documents like this, that you're going to be adopting hopefully today. We do that by investing, we do that by being present. Something that we're not always as good about doing is communicating success, but we should be doing that. We should communicate our own successes, but also those of others. And we should allow for change. One of the reasons why we are bringing this document before you, it's not part of the comprehensive plan, which when we adopt an urban village plan, it becomes part of the comp plan. We do need to be able to respond to new opportunities or changes that occur in our So we have three action plans, one for each of the districts. There's, I think, 48 or so actions just for the downtown core. I'm not going through all of those with you. I just wanted to show you some examples of success that we've had and how those examples are going to translate into the future. We didn't wait, we haven't been waiting for adoption of this plan. We have things underway. The federal building, I think, is either out to bid or any day. Public Works will be bidding the work to renovate that first floor, and our Public Works Engineering Division will be moving in, bringing more people downtown and freeing up space here at City Hall for other departments. We are going to be improving our city center design review process. Those are some of those things behind the scenes that not everyone sees, but we recognize that we could make things a little bit, run a little smoother, and we want to do that because we want it to be a great place for people to invest in. Looking at the feasibility of the new library, if a new library is built, that's going to be another one of those kind of showcase big investments the city makes. So it's important to get it right and important that it be placed in the right location. Another important aspect to downtown is making sure that it feels comfortable and safe for people to visit. This community has expectations on what kind of behavior we expect, and so the police officers that the mayor is prioritizing will be dedicated to downtown and will be, I think, on foot, walking around, be a little more visible. I put the town square in there too as an opportunity for me to mention that we have different phases. So we have short-term projects, those projects that we hope to complete in the next six years, and then we have midterm and long-term projects. This town square is one of those that we're looking at kind of a little further out, but was definitely something that Darby heard a lot of when she was reaching out to the community. The State Street Corridor, this is one that I'm really excited about. I think it's going to be similar to the work that we undertook for Bay Street and Holly and that area. It's a placemaking opportunity. We have a lot of real estate. When Public Works took one of those lanes away because we didn't need it for traffic and turned it into a bike lane, it left lots of extra space out there. And we want to look at opportunities for utilizing that space and working with the businesses there. State Street is becoming a pretty healthy, dynamic place on its own, so a little further investment on our part in the future could take those blocks to another level. Old Town, like I mentioned, each district's in a slightly different kind of place. In Old Town, we do have opportunities to redevelop some city-owned parcels. They are similar in nature to the pit that we had at Cornwall and Railroad. And we think that one is probably a little more ripe for development than the other, and that's Army Street, the second one listed there. I've just, last week, met with John Sirey, who owns the adjacent parcel, and they are still interested in partnering with us on a redevelopment project. So we expect to issue a request for development proposals in the coming months. Maritime Heritage Park is certainly a priority of Mayor Kelly's and will be a major work program item for our Parks Department this next year, trying to get, we have the bones of a very beautiful park. We just want to have more activity down there, more programming and reasons for people to come to this place. Public Works has a goal to improve the habitat between Roder and Holly. We've made great habitat improvements, Holly to the falls, but this is a gap, and they have that on their work program. The waterfront district, I'm not going to go through each one of these, but waterfront district actions, all of those actions in the implementation strategy before you are actions that are part of the inter-local agreement between the city and the port. So they are actions that have already been adopted. Oh, the utility master plan, this is an earlier version of the PowerPoint that, I'm sorry. The utility master plan's not complete yet, the district utility planning portion of it is. So we'll leave that. And then finally, we do, again, it's not, this strategy is not part of the comp plan, but we are asking that you adopt it and that we proceed in making great progress and that we come back on an annual basis and kind of evaluate where we're at, update the strategy, add things that we need to add, and strike off things that we've completed, and then remember to celebrate the success that we're having. And another fabulous shot of our fine downtown. That's it.
So, committee, Jack?
So Tara, with the State Street improvements that you were talking about earlier, are you going to be using the work that the Western students through Nick Safratos's class did as a template?
Yeah, we will be incorporating that work. The corridor planning that we're planning, that we're doing though, is focused on the public realm, a little less so on the private properties as far as planning out buildings and things like that.
They were doing both, I think, in their presentation. Okay.
Just want to comment on the Maritime Heritage Park. You know, this is the park that most cities would give anything to have what's going on down there. We've got waterfalls, we've got a place where sea lions come up through the park, and I've seen otters down there, other things, we've got the amphitheater. There's so much going on down there, that trail is just beautiful, walking down there. Most cities would love to have, you know, a park where you've got waterfalls, you've got the sculptures, you've got what's going on there. And we just got to make sure we redevelop and reclaim it for the citizens to get people into that park, but that's, it is a treasure in there.
We agree. We don't have, we don't have the capital investment, we don't have to make that huge of a capital investment. We just need more activities and programming.
Yeah, it's just fabulous in there, right? Yes, Michael?
First of all, I would say I'm a huge fan of long-term thinking and having official and formal to-do lists for the city, whether it's on like the Transportation Benefits District or the tip, or this. So I really appreciate this. There's at least a dozen or more of my favorite kind of projects in here. I'm going to mention three of them. D-48, investing in new parking technology for better parking management downtown, moving basically into the 21st century on that. There's at least a couple items that have to do with the commercial street parking garage, both the garage itself... garage, both the garage itself and the kind of plaza area in front of it. And also, well, we just talked about the State Street Plan. I think that's an enormous opportunity. If you, you know, go to any world-class cities, you'll find particularly large, wide streets that instead of having four lanes of traffic, uh, they have a lot more that uses the right-of-way. And that, I, you know, personally, privately, I'd like to change the name back to Elk Street. That's what it was. It was the major street north-south, and that's why it is so wide. It's a legacy that was created by Elk Street, and I think we can, we can use that legacy, use that extra wide right-of-way and make it someplace really special. So I'm very, very supportive of this, and so I would like to make a motion to vote that we adopt the city center implement, or recommend that we adopt tonight the city center implementation strategy.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and second before us. Any comments? Yes, Roxanne.
I think it goes without saying, but it's just something that I think my council members will agree with. I hope continuously, as our downtown especially is redeveloping, that we're always looking at the way that it's zoned. Because in the future, we may see that it turns into more of a garment district. So why wouldn't we create good zoning that would incentivize such businesses to develop? Or we're seeing expansion of breweries. So that's something that's interesting to explore. And so, I just hope we'll always take a look at that to make sure we get the right kind of businesses and we make it easier for those kinds of things to grow.
Did you have a, okay.
I just wanted to say kudos. This is absolutely fantastic and it makes me very proud to be from Bellingham with us looking at our, our city this way. And I've been getting really great feedback from people on Maritime Park and the things that we're doing there and how we're changing, um, the culture in that park. And, uh, so I really want to commend you on that. Um, one thing I did, would like to see a little bit more of, is there's only one spot where it talks about wayfinding. Um, and that is, you know, most of it is actually in the downtown proper already. What I would really hope for us to see or to look for is ways to get people from the freeway to downtown. And that's one of the things that I think that we have a little break in our information is, um, we have this beautiful downtown, but we want to encourage people to not just go to Bellas Fair, to the mall, which helps our economy, but to also come to our downtown and make it easier for people to figure out what a beautiful place we have here. So I'm just kind of curious what our plans are beyond the downtown to wayfinding to get us there.
So the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee, uh, has recommended, so if you approve the, the, adopt the budget, um, we will have money to make investments, uh, in wayfinding. Some of those are investments are in downtown, like we need to replace banners. Um, but another aspect is to be working with DOT, Department of Transportation, on the interchange at I-5. Very recently, and, and those of us, we, we live here and we stopped looking at signage and not paying attention to it, but very recently, they ha, the state made improvements both at the Fairhaven exit, but also in city center northbound. But we need a little better signage southbound, which is, um, getting at the Canadian, um, customer. And then, when you get off the freeway on Lakeway, um, we are going to improve, there's these empty poles sitting there, and we're going to make some improvements there to kind of highlight the entry into our community, but more importantly in that case to downtown.
Jack? Kind of a segue to that, another thing that we need wayfinding for is coming out of the Bellingham International Airport onto Baker View, it has no sign showing where Bellingham is. It just says I-5.
Interesting. That's good to know.
Nothing there. We, we really need to have a good wayfinding into that.
Yeah. And before we vote, I just want to take the opportunity to thank you, Tara, and Darby and the other staff for all the hard work that went into this. I mean, you've done a marvelous job on the plan, the implementation strategy, pulling this together and all the participants. So, thank you. It was a great job.
Welcome.
Yes, Mayor.
So you stole the first of my thunder, which is making sure that Tara and Darby get thanked for what they've done, in addition to the other staff that they've been working with. And I think this is a little precursor of what a community development department, a reinvigorated community development department can do. The other thing, Michael, is I appreciated you acknowledging the, the points. When we went through the waterfront plan and Tara was the project manager, one of the reasons we got through that, it complicated stuff in the time we did, is because we broke it down into activities and who was going to do what when. And I do think that this, the way that this has been broken down is going to help not only the council, but the public know what, you know, what are you doing? Well, at least it's, it's here. So, um, so I want to add my thanks to the staff. They've done a great job and I am very pleased and hopefully the project, as this one is laid out, will be the way we lay out projects for you so that you can look at a lot of the things we're doing and have more information in a very clear and concise way. So, thank you for your positive comments. That's, that's good.
Okay, so we've got a, I believe, a motion and second before us. All those in favor, answer aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes, five-zero, with Jean Knudsen and Kathy Lehman excused. Yes.
And I forgot to say, Saturday, we had a great amount of people down at the park playing disc golf with not just our permanent, uh, basket, but with ones that had been set up. And the Disc Golf Association, which is one of those avid partners, um, is so excited to have another venue besides Cornwall Park to do that. Um, I didn't make my first two discs, but I've ended up making one to christen the basket without cheating, standing in front of the line, but, um, so I'm challenging you all to disc golf when the weather gets better.
Uh, the next item up before committee of the whole is rental, continuation of the rental housing registration program work session. And this was a continuation of our last meeting where we weren't able to get through all Yes. So I think where we had left off with this, Jack, it was some items that was, that you had that weren't, that we hadn't been, didn't have time to address yet.
Yeah, and I'll speak, I'll speak more to that, but I think first, um, I believe staff wanted to provide us with some information that they had researched over the last week.
Okay, great.
Members of the council, uh, just a brief update, uh, since we last talked on this matter. Uh, you had asked us to proceed with both, um, the logistics and developing the program in terms of the registration action, as well as to evaluate, um, and identify the issues associated with inspection. In one instance, in terms of inspections, we've made significant progress and we'll be able to return to you, um, when you consider this matter next with detailed information about costs and frequency and, and how that could be assessed. And I should note that, um, a number of city departments have contributed time and effort, uh, both Public Works and IT have really made us, uh, brought us up quickly on those issues. That being said, um, in terms of the registration, there are some logistical issues we're working out now. And, uh, as noted, uh, previously, that may affect an effective date for the actual registration, just the physical ability of being able to facilitate it without undue cost. Um, and we should have greater information again when you consider that next. Just some of the details and just the next steps. It appears after a study of the units, uh, that we have identified, um, that are rental, about eighty-three hundred of those units will be subject to the program itself. That includes the sampling provisions you've considered in the draft ordinance, as well as the state provisions for, uh, sampling on larger projects, a few units that are typical. We do see that in terms of the inspections themselves, uh, we're in sort of an interesting point in that, as you're aware, uh, planning and community development is going to be revising its permitting system, a significant expenditure and one that, uh, should afford greater, uh, utility for both customers and the community members. Use that system as well as being more efficient for staff. That creates some issues in terms of creating a new system and then replacing that system. So we're working our way through that to find a workaround. Um, we have both good estimates now on indirect and direct costs associated with inspection, and we'll present those to you shortly. While there might be some savings, it appears from outsourcing inspections, should council choose to proceed in that direction. Um, we do believe that it would likely be inefficient to outsource the scheduling, uh, of those inspections, the organization and recording of them. It would be duplicative and, um, we would have little control. We'll talk more about that when we come back to you. It's a, it's just sort of a, um, organizational issue. Um, we have a good estimate on the number of inspections that we can do in a day. Um, we've been informed by the HUD inspectors as well as, uh, your actions in reviewing the prior, um, checklist about the kind of issues we'll be looking at. So we've got a good metric we can apply. And we have contacted a number of other jurisdictions to assess both the frequency of inspection, the duration of the inspection, and the enforcement issues that come up. Because these all need to be wrapped up in terms of inspection. As far as registration, um, we are exploring, um, with the help of both finance and IT, the use of the state online business registration website. Um, that could simplify things. A number of other jurisdictions, I think three or four in Washington do that for rental registration. We do use a business and occupation tax or BNO software or HDL. That could be a possible home for the data to migrate there and then hopefully when our, uh, department system is up, migrate that further. Um, there are some costs associated with that initially, and we plan to establish, uh, what those would be and again, bring that forward to you. And finally, I just to address our next steps, uh, these are all kind of functional issues that we'll follow up with the state on using that, uh, website and see if that's at all practicable for our purposes. We'll follow up with the HDL system and see what the costs would be to use that as a piggyback, um, both in personnel and licensure costs as well as operational costs. And also, um, not sacrifice long-term benefit for short-term efficiency, make sure we could migrate the data over without undue cost. And we'll work with IT to consider other possible regulatory, uh, regulations, uh, recording schemes, uh, and approaches so that if we're not able to use the state database, we can find a different way and give you an estimated date for initiating, uh, the registration function, should council take action on this. So, um, our focus has been primarily on, uh, the logistics and implementation steps, and we'll return to you with that information at a subsequent meeting.
Jack? So Rick, with the, uh, the issue of whether, whether or not to go through the state system and the website or to do it through the permitting or permit tracker, uh, internally in the planning department, is that, is that going to be a determination of who actually, for staff, who actually is going to be, uh, managing the data, inputting it, managing it?
That's a component part.
Either the finance department or, or through the planning department?
Yes, that's a component part, and we're, we're going to find the most efficient way of doing that, um, with a long-term goal after the permitting software comes on. That permitting software, as I understand it, has a module that's designed for licensure specifically for these kind of programs, and we'll be able to do it in-house. It's just during the transition time. Um, as council is aware, the earliest start date for our permit software is October of fifteen, and that's assuming everything goes right. Having done two migrations of data in other departments, um, I've never seen everything go right. So, uh, we'll, we'll reserve a date, specific time.
Roxanne?
Uh, one of the simplest things that I would love to relieve some stress about is the launch date that we have in our current ordinance. What would be a more realistic timeframe for launching a program so that I could possibly make a motion to relieve that stress?
Um, in terms of the inspections, uh, again, we, we think at this point, um, the earliest start date might be in October. In term of registrations, I can't afford a date today because we're trying to find out about those two systems and whether they're compatible. But we should have that back for you next time you consider this matter.
Okay, I'll hold off on that then. Thank you.
Uh, Jack, then Michael, or Michael first?
I just want to actually make a comment. Um, I'm really happy we're at this stage. We've been on this, kind of, um, this, this little precipice for a long time. We're finally talking about the practical, logistical, organizational, implementational issues. And I'm, you know, happy to listen to and to defer to the administration on most of these matters. I think our decision really is at the level of the ordinance and the, the program parameters, and I'm happy to, uh, wait for the staff reports on that. I'd like us to figure out if there's any remaining issues at the program level and the ordinance and then await, uh, to hear back further on those implementational details at a later date.
Jack? So I hand it out to the council and here's some, the rest. I had a series of motions that I wanted to make to kind of further along the ordinance part of it, understanding that a lot of the details that Rick and the staff are working on have to do with either the, um, you know, it's primarily the, the implementation component of it and not necessarily the structural part of exactly what, uh, what the ordinance is, is speaking to. Uh, and to what Roxanne's, uh, commented about this, you know, the actual start date, I think, I think we could keep the ordinance the way it is right now until, until they come back to us, uh, at our next meeting, then we can, uh, make another amendment to, to change that, uh, to what, whatever the appropriate date is. So I had four different, uh, motions that I would like to go and make that would amend this, this ordinance. The first one is to move to amend the rental registration draft to modify the list of exemptions from inspections so that the rental unit associated with properties containing a detached accessory dwelling unit or carriage house be required to be inspected as provided in the ordinance. And to speak to that, uh, that has to do with, uh, some discussions that we had in committee, planning committee, a while back earlier this year, that we really never resolved. But the idea was that if you were in an, in an attached accessory dwelling unit, that, uh, both the renter and the owner of the property would, would be in the same building and the owner would have a higher level of, um, interest and responsibility to make sure that the rental unit was, uh, in some sort of minimum state of health and safety. If it was a detached unit, uh, there would not be that same level of, of, um, concern maybe by the owner. And, uh, the thought was, was that, you know, that those units should be inspected and put, brought into the, uh, program as, as part of inspections. So I wanted to make that motion to change the, the exemption components of the, of the ordinance.
Okay. So we have a motion and second before us. Michael?
Just to clarify, are you saying currently those detached units and carriage houses are exempt in the ordinance as written and you would change that they would not be exempt?
That's correct. Yeah, all, all ADUs in the current ordinance are exempt, and this one is, is bringing that out. The other thing to speak to this is that if a property owner chose to live in the ADU, then the single-family house associated with that ADU would then be a rental property and subject to inspection.
Yeah. I have to say, I agree with that because I argued for that in the first draft of it, so I definitely will, will vote for that. Uh, any other comments? All those in favor of the motion, answer aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Motion passes, six-zero. Kathy Lehman excused.
The next motion is to move to amend the rental registration draft to reflect a requirement that all rental units subject to inspection be inspected once every three years, provided that an exception be made for units that pass inspection or first reinspection whereby the inspection frequency shall be every five years.
I have a question on that. When it says...
Go ahead and second for the person who's...
Okay, yeah. I have a question on that, and I agree in principle with it, but is there exemptions for newly built? Because my understanding was in, in the ordinance, it would be newer-built, uh, units wouldn't be subject to inspection.
That's already in the ordinance, yes.
It's in there, but, but the way this... It's in there, but the way this is written, I just wanted to make sure this wasn't going to contradict that.
I would provide the actual language in here, but this was basically to establish what the proposed change would be, and then to have the...
And then you'd have the exemption, still the same exemption. Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Peter would go and work out the specific language to make that happen.
That makes sense.
While honoring those other exceptions.
Roxanne, oh, Pinky?
Jack, can I ask for some clarification? Are you saying in this motion that we are inspecting every single unit?
No, those are subject.
Only the ones that are subject to inspection.
Subject to inspection. Because that's not something that we have decided as a council yet, right?
That's what I'm bringing to the floor.
Okay, Roxanne?
I'm not ready to support this. It just goes down to a simple fundamental. I really want to know what the costs are that are associated with every measure that we would take for this. Because this is really dangerous water for our renters, and for our property owners, and for all involved. So I'd just rather we had more cost estimates to make better informed decisions.
Michael?
I have a question, Jack, about the first reinspection component. I believe the proposal for city inspections, at least, is you get one, at least, some of us have proposed, that you get a reinspection free if it's a city inspector. And I think that's what you're referring to. But if someone takes a private inspection route, I'm not sure what reinspection means in that case. I don't know how we can know if it was a, you know, how we know if it was a first reinspection. It could have been the fourth reinspection if it's a private inspector, and we would never know.
Well, I guess that's a question for Peter or Jim. Do we get information from private inspections as part of a program as laid out under this particular proposal?
Yeah, Peter, if I had a legal department, my understanding of the state of the statute and the case law is that we would not, it would be a best practice, and really well-advised, to not require that failed private inspections be turned over to the city.
But would we know if there was a reinspection? Doesn't, we don't have to see it, we just know whether or not there was a reinspection, or that the reinspection did not pass.
I think we could look at that and see if that would work out.
Michael?
At this point, Jack?
Sorry, at this point, Jack, that one particular, by the way, I love the idea of rewarding clean buildings with a longer period. I think new buildings already get a five-year window. A clean building, give it a longer window, too. I support the idea. I would support this change to the program. The reinspection thing is weird, is there, I don't feel ready to vote on that. Could we table this, or delay and bring it forward when we have answers on that particular legal issue? Seems unresolved to me.
I guess so. I mean, we would delay the whole thing a couple of extra weeks, but, yeah. One of the items was just whether or not we could complete that with this particular council. By delaying it, we would push it forward into next year with a brand-new council member that would have to come up to speed. That's really the only issue associated with that.
If this was modified to refer only to city inspectors, then I think the whole problem goes away. And that would be, that would mean that if you chose a city inspection, there's a chance, if you're clean, you could get the extra award. If you went the private route, we couldn't offer them that benefit, just because we don't control the private inspections. And that would remove the legal hurdle.
That's true.
If you would not mind amending your own motion with that, then I don't see a legal problem, and I could support the motion at this point.
Okay, so...
Would it work to just strike through or first inspection?
Well, or we could...
Would that solve?
Or the other thing we could do is say that exception be made for units that pass city...
City inspection.
City inspection, or reinspection. For city-controlled, or sponsored, or, you know, whatever the proper terminology would be for something like that.
Mayor?
Just a question, Jack. So if someone picked a private inspector, and they got a clean inspection, they wouldn't have the opportunity to have a longer timeframe?
We have no idea whether it was their first one, or their second one, or their third one that was clean.
Unless they will...
But the point is that they are clean.
But everyone will eventually pass it, or they won't be in the program. So everyone will pass an inspection, it's just whether it's your first one.
Do we care if it's their first one? If they have one thing they have to correct, and they go correct it, can they get an extended...
If everyone eventually passes, and everyone gets the same benefit, it's not a benefit anymore.
Well, that would be great if everybody passes, and there's no incentive...
They're going to be required to pass, though, so...
Right.
I think the question, Mayor, is...
I guess I'm missing, I'm missing the point about whether or not it's a, since the state is the one that says we have to do a private inspection, I guess I'm missing the point on this. Because I think the goal is, we don't want, we want everybody's units to be safe, right?
I think one of the issues is wanting to give an incentive for people to have, you know, to make it so that the inspections are fairly fast and straightforward, that they're clean, that, you know, either pass the first time, or if you need a reinspection, that you pass the second time. But if you're not passing the second time, then you became, you become kind of a drag on the entire system, and there shouldn't be the reward associated with that.
I don't have a problem with that, Jack, as much as whether it's done by a private inspector or the city inspector. That's the part I'm asking about. So you pass the first time, you need to get a reinspection, regardless of which person does it. And I think Peter said we could work on knowing, I mean, we're going to have some kind of a standard sheet that says what you have to pass.
Well, that might be one thing that would be, you know, if the private inspector and the owner were willing to offer the information as a condition of getting the additional two years, that would make sense. If they didn't want to do that, then they would be on a three-year schedule.
Well, and for me, that makes a lot of sense, that you demonstrate that you passed the inspection, because we're going to have the criteria you have to meet. And I would think that then it wouldn't matter if it was a private or a city. It could be either one, as long as you demonstrated that you passed the inspection. What you just said, Jack.
Yeah. So the question is how to put that into the motion.
Well, maybe you don't have to have the exact words, that you just say that's what you want to make sure that we do, and then Peter and staff can put together the words for you.
Yeah, I'd like to modify the motion to do exactly what the mayor just talked about.
But, Jack?
Can we please restate the motion, then?
Can I just throw something out here? If you leave it just the way it is, with first inspection, leave it for staff to set up what that policy is for reporting that it's a first inspection. We don't need to deal with that. We're just setting the policy, that's the policy we want. We ask staff to figure out that implementation strategy, how that works. Then we don't have to, you know, if it's private, if it's whoever does it, it's still the same. We just have, staff can then figure out how that reporting, if they don't want to report it, then they don't get the bonus. That's, you know...
That's, makes a lot of...
Does that make sense, Michael?
It makes sense.
Because that way, I think, you know, we just leave it for staff, we just, you know, do our stuff and get out of the way. Michael?
It does make sense, to state the principle of what we want.
Yeah.
And if you could restate the principle as your motion, I think we could probably, I would probably support it.
Okay, well, first of all, I'll reamend back to the original motion, of just that pass inspection or first reinspection. And then the principle is that we want to determine, that we actually want to see the inspections and understand what the reinspections, the history of the reinspections are, in order to qualify for the incentive provided in this motion.
Okay. Michael?
It's a little bit confusing. What I think we're doing, what I am supporting, is the principle that we want to provide incentives for clean inspections.
Right.
And I will support that.
Yes, Pinky?
I'm not comfortable with this right now, and I'm not ready to vote on it, and if we go forward with it today, I'm going to tell you I'm going to vote no.
Okay. Okay.
The luxury of what we're doing today is, on December 8, we're going to see the whole thing in front of us, and if we don't agree with it, we don't have to vote for it. So I'll go ahead and go along with this, and then take a good, long, hard look at it on the 8.
Yeah, but when we see the ordinance, that's when we'll be really, okay? So, Jack?
Yeah, it's, Pinky, this is just to establish the language, so that we can go and take a closer look on it, at it, on the 8, you know, with these particular policy directions.
Roxanne?
I'm uncomfortable with once every three years at this point. And that's why I have to vote no on this, because I don't know what it would cost, and I just don't want to put the cart before the horse, until we have a financial understanding.
Okay, anything else before, we got a motion, a second before us. All those in favor, answer aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion passes four-two, with Kathy Lehman excused. Okay. Anything else, Jack?
Yes, a third one. Move to amend the rental registration draft to read as follows, and this is out of section And it reads, "Council, the city council review and to strike the words 'and sunset' provision." And the language is currently proposed reads, "Before January 1, 2019, the city council shall review the chapter's effects on the community and the problems the chapter was intended to remedy. My motion is to put a period after the word 'remedy,' and then to strike the rest of that section, which reads, 'and shall repeal, continue, or modify this chapter,' period. Failure by the city council to act in accordance with this section shall cause this chapter to expire at 12:01 a.m. on January 1, 2019."
Second?
Yes, Gene?
Yes, I, you know, we've had over the years, the proverbial shall, should. I think we should put in will, or something concrete, that this thing just doesn't sit on the books forever and after these years. I don't mind the years you have on there, that gives us enough time to take a look at it. But I'm looking for a stronger word than shall, we've been down that road before.
Yes.
Will, go ahead.
I was going to just suggest, if council wants to direct us to come up with wording for a review period, and the nature of that review, we happily would repair that and bring that back.
That's fine.
And that way, we could work out the language.
Does that, does that sound okay with everyone? Okay, okay.
Are we just agreed to that?
What?
It wasn't clear to me. A review isn't what, the main thing that the Jack proposal did, is it get rid of the sunset clause, and replace it with a review clause. So I would agree with that.
Okay. So, anything else?
So are we voting on that?
Oh, okay. Yeah, okay. All those in favor, answer aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six-zero, with Kathy Lehman excused. I'm sorry, I'm rusty.
Finally, is to at least move to direct staff to prepare an ordinance reflecting council-approved amendments, so far, to the rental registration draft for presentation at the December 8, 2014 council meeting.
Okay, my question is, can staff, is this a doable thing, before I voting the vote on that, it's a...
So, usually, the way the council prepares its motions is first and second, and then we do amendments, or whatever happens. And then third and final is more, you know, I mean, we don't usually change it on the third and final. So in order to accommodate a new member, which we've talked a little bit about, if you did it on the 15th, so the staff had a couple weeks, or three weeks, to make sure that they got it right, and you did it, and it was all set to go, it would only include, then, a third and final after the fact. I mean, in the 1st of January, whatever. I mean, you'd have your ordinance done, and then basically, you'd be approving that done ordinance on the 3rd, if that's the way you want to look at it. I just want the staff to have the time to get it done right.
Right, that's what I'm asking, I just don't want to... Michael?
Normally, I'd see no problem with delaying it, however, I think this may not be a unanimous vote. If it were unanimous matter, I see no problem. But I don't know if a non-unanimous vote in one year will turn into something different in the next year, no one knows who the council member will be. So I think there's, like, unusual risks in what would normally be just be an easy way to give ourselves an extra week.
Well, what risk is that?
Yes, functionally, we're working posthaste to get the information for you. I'm reminded, it is a short week because of the Thanksgiving holiday, and packets would need to go out next Tuesday. While we might get the ordinance prepared to a workable form for your consideration, it may be difficult for us to firm up that date for, and costs for licensure. We'll work on it to the best of our abilities, but that's the deadline we're working on. We'd have to have it in by next Tuesday.
Okay. Michael, to answer your question, my kind of feeling is, if we don't have four solid votes for it, whenever that is, that will carry into the next year, then we probably don't want to be doing this. I mean, you know, we should, you know, if that one vote's going to make, then, really? This is a major item we're doing, and if we wait that extra time to give staff the opportunity to do it, or we can look at passing a first and second, I think we're in good shape.
And all of you will still be here next year, that are sitting right up in the air.
Right.
God, you just ruined my day, Kelly, thank you very much.
Yeah, Jack?
So I don't have a problem with amending this to December 15. But if there was, because the changes that we talked about, and the fact that, you know, you've had this, you've had these motions now for a while, to at least look at them, and the other motions, I think, Peter, you've had an opportunity to figure out, at least in your head, maybe, how those changes would work. If there's any chance that you could present it on the December 8 meeting, for us to go and vote on, you know, if it works, whether it's in the packet or not, I mean, there's other departments that give us information the day of a meeting, I think, on something like this, if the changes were fairly straightforward, if you wanted to do that, but if not, to wait till the 15th.
Well, Jack, I have a little bit of a concern about things not being in the packet that you're going to vote on, because it isn't just for you, it's for the public to be able to know what we're doing, too. And if it's not in the packet, then we can't be assured that the public knows.
And I fully agree with that. I mean, there's been some things that we have done that have been presented to us on the day of, and...
Yeah, I would prefer not doing those on the day of, too.
Okay. So I'm just making the motion to change this to December 15, then.
Okay.
Or to amend it.
So are we, is that motion for the amendment, or for the whole, for this motion as the 15th? That's...
Well, I would like to do it as the whole thing being on the 15th, but...
Vote on the amendment.
I did technically put a motion on the table, but...
Okay, oh, yeah, okay. So we got a motion and second before us to direct staff to bring back an ordinance reflecting council-approved amendments for December 15. Any other comments? All those in favor, answer aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention, motion passes six-zero. Thank you, council, good work, this is tough. And, yeah, so, yeah, thank you. And now, where are we, oh, approval of minutes, we have, what minutes we got to approve here?
17th?
November?
And a 10th, we have both.
11/7, November.
Harry, we have two.
Yeah, two of them, what dates is the 17th, and, yeah.
Move approval of the November 17th committee of the whole meeting minutes?
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion and second before us. All those in favor, answer aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention, okay. Michael?
Move approval of the November 10th committee meeting minutes?
Okay.
Second.
You're getting quick.
We have a motion before us. All those in favor, answer aye.
Aye.
And I abstained as I was not at that meeting, so...
What, you weren't there?
What?
We didn't miss you, no, just kidding.
I know. That's why it went so smooth. So the motion passes five zero one with Kathy Lehman excused. And, well, and we got old and new business coming up. And I've got an item, a couple items on, that I want to discuss under old and new business. And it relates to the appointment of a new council person. I hope everyone has a copy, there was an option for an addendum. And Peter and I have been talking about the process and realized there was one item we hadn't fully discussed, and that would be the actual night of the process, how the process was worked. And they're talking about it, this is what we came up with, and they just want to run it through to make sure this works for everyone. And basically, this is a resolution establishing appointment process, fulfill the vacancy due to the anticipated resignation of third ward city council member Kathy Lehman. So on the night, we're hoping for the 17th, we're going to get the budget done before then, right? So he can do this?
The 15th.
That's necessary. The presiding member will open the floor to nominations. Nominations will be recorded in the order made. Nominations will be closed by motion and vote. After the close of nomination, a vote will be taken on each of the nominees in the order of nomination. Council members may vote for only one nominee per round of voting. As soon as any nominee receives four affirmative votes, voting will cease and that nominee will be appointed to the vacancy. If no nominee receives four votes, then the council will adjourn to executive session to further discuss the qualifications of the candidates before voting again in open session. And the reason we would go into executive session is this is to discuss as we would any other personnel matter. And so then we would come out, but the voting and discussion would then come out front. Michael?
Just to clarify, so this begins with the presiding member will open the floor to nominations, presumably immediately preceding that would be the first and maybe only executive session. So this is the action taken immediately after we come out of executive session? We then begin this...
Peter?
Yeah, so this is an addendum to the resolution, and the resolution that you already adopted provides for going into executive session to have that initial discussion about qualifications. So this is to clear up what may happen after that.
Right, and then we would come out and we would do that. And we, yeah, but we realized we hadn't made that real clear, and I wanted to make sure people were on board and it's not just me and Peter setting this up.
Should we make a motion then to amend the...
I just got a question.
Yes.
Under the word qualification, Peter, by our charter, you have to be the age of 25 and live in the year, one year in the city and the ward. So when you talk about discussing qualifications, is that all we can talk about?
No, this is the qualities that you're ultimately going to, on the merits of your vote ultimately.
That's fine, that's fine, okay. I just used the word qualification, I was looking at it different.
So, yes, Roxanne?
People keep asking me this, so I wanted to state for everybody's understanding, what happens if we can't make up our minds? And if we can't make up our minds, the mayor will decide after 30 days? Isn't that what it says? We are decision makers, we will make up our minds.
And having gone through this, and Jean having gone through this, there has been times where it's taken quite a number of times in, yeah, and, right, we will get there if the, so, yeah, so I would make the motion that we accept this if...
I'll second your motion, then.
And all those in favor, answer aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention. Now, one other item relating to this, we have had one application so far, applicant who has stated that he is unable to be here the night to do a verbal presentation. And I just wanted to run that by people, if, you know, meets all the other parts, but not going to be here, we will still be able to consider that application. Is that, yes?
Can I ask that maybe that person submit a video to be played to us so that they have an opportunity to show themselves and they get their three-minute? Could that be in lieu of? I'm just going to throw that out there.
You might want to talk with HR about legality of that.
What? Yeah, Roxanne?
I don't know if I entirely think that's fair, because these people are going to be coming and speaking in front of our public, and that's a far different thing that you could do with video splicing and redoing and redoing. So that's why I'm hesitant about that approach.
Yeah, well, Michael?
Go ahead.
I think that if we treat applicants differently, that raises legal concerns. The applicant is disadvantaged, but through no action of our own, maybe they can think of ways they might want to rectify the situation, but I don't think I want us to be taking any actions one way or the other.
Well, I agree, because if I was sitting on the audience and I was an applicant and I presented myself and somebody else didn't and got chosen, I wouldn't feel too happy about it. So that's just, that's just me, so. I think we need to really take a hard look at this one, and I don't know.
Yeah, but we'll look at the qualifications.
We'll do that, yeah.
Okay. Okay, I just wanted, I wanted to throw it out there because I didn't want to be the person making any decisions on this, although this is a council.
Dragged the rest of us down with you.
That's right. Okay, I think that's everything on, so we're going to now work session on...
Carrie, I've got one old and new business real quick.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I got a phone call today from the Burchwood people. They're having a open house tomorrow night to thank the city council and thank city officials who've helped them along on their quest to making their neighborhood a better place from 6:30 to 8:30 at Burchwood Elementary School, so y'all come.
6:30 to 8:30? Okay. Okay, any other old, Michael?
No, this is, really has to do with what's coming up next. I'm wondering how long we're going to work on the budget before we come back for the executive session. It's already 3 o'clock.
We got 3:40. No, we got the exec, that's right, we got an executive session scheduled.
We can stop, I mean.
I think we should decide how long we want to do the budget so that people, nothing matters, will know when we start executive session. Do you want to put in an hour on this, an hour and a half? What do we want to put in?
How long are we looking for executive session?
I just have to look at the agenda and how much time is allotted.
30 minutes?
Yeah, 30 minutes.
Okay. We got to put some time in this, or we're not going to have that budget done by the 15th, and so we want to, we will, it's not a matter of wanting to, we will. An hour, at least an hour? Okay. Hour 15? An hour.